Hey, we're going to go ahead and get started. So if you could please silence your cell phones and come on in the room. Welcome to District Parent Council's Board of Education Candidate Forum. As the tri-chairs, Stacy, Paula, and I like to welcome you tonight. And thank you to our candidates for being here tonight to share your vision, your philosophy, your qualifications, commitments to the position you're seeking within BVSD. Thanks also to Impact on Education for sponsoring this event with us tonight. On behalf of the DPC, thank you to all of you who have chosen to spend your evening with us to learn more about the school board candidates. This is an important election, especially since the new board members will be selecting our new superintendent. We encourage all of you to listen and carefully consider the responses you hear tonight, vote, and encourage others in the community to vote. Here's the format for tonight. The forums, the forum, uh, excuse me, the forum is being televised and recorded, and it will be posted on our DPC website. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves, and then we'll move into a set of six questions covering topics important to our community. In an effort to respect everyone's time and provide as much valuable information as possible, the DPC chairs gave the questions to candidates ahead of time, along with the time limits for the answers. Stacy and I will alternate asking the questions, and Paula will be the time keeper to make sure equal time is given to each candidate. She will, she will post a 10-second warning, and we ask that you please respect the time limits and, and so that we have equal treatment for everybody. Stacy and I, oh, I already said that, candidates will then have one minute for closing statements. And because of the time constraints, there will not be an opportunity for the audience to ask questions tonight, and we will also not have parents sharing, which is usually what we do in our DPC meetings. So this forum will most likely take up the whole evening. So thank you for joining us. In addition, should you need more information about the candidates after tonight, the League of Women Voters did hold a forum as well on September 27th, and they will be posting the video of their forum on their website soon. So without further ado, we will go ahead and ask our first question.
Good evening. To keep everyone fair and not start with the same person each time, we'll start with Tina, the first question, and then we'll start with Kitty, and so on and so on. Okay? So the first question is really just an opening statement, and please mention your personal experience and involvement with the public schools that qualify you, you as a school board member. And this is two minutes, and we'll start with Tina.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the DPC and to Impact for hosting this event. I think it's great that we have different groups in the community that are trying to get more visibility onto this school board race that is really important, and we're all excited to be participating in these forums. We were at a forum this, earlier today, in the Democratic Boulder Women, and I'd also like to mention, for people who are looking for more information, there were two interviews on KGNU that are fairly short that you can listen to online, and those were nicely done by district. I'm unopposed for my position, but I will just touch on briefly, prior to joining the board four years ago, I was involved in my student accountability committee for three years, and also on the district accountability committee, which I chaired. And so when I entered the board, I had a pretty deep knowledge of the staff, of the governance model of the school board, and I feel like I've done a, a pretty good job as a school board member for the last four years. We had a really tough spring, and I'm really optimistic now about where we are. We're extraordinarily grateful for Cindy Stevenson for stepping in and helping the district start moving forward and healing. And so I'm looking forward to finding a new leader for this school and using my experience to try and, to find someone who can really address the issues that we have in a very clear way. So, thank you.
Good evening, and I will reiterate Tina's thanks for sponsoring this forum. My name's Kitty Sargent, and I am a social worker. I'm the parent of two BVSD grads, and I'm a former teacher. And the reason I'm running for school board is because the district needs leadership to help bridge the divide that's happening on the board. With hiring a new superintendent and keeping BVSD one of the best districts in the state, it's important to have strong leadership on the board. I'm running because I've been a lifelong champion of public schools. I'm running because we need to improve the achievement of our lowest-achieving students, and I'm running because every neighborhood deserves a great public school. For 19 years, when my kids were in school, I was very involved in the district. At the district and school level, I co-chaired a fireside, which they call it student account, or school accountability, but at the time they called student, uh, school improvement team, excuse me. I co-chaired a PTO at Monarch, K8. I served on the Safe Schools Coalition advocating for LGBTQ students and staff. I was on the School Aged Care Advisory Committee. I was on the committee that Katie Fleming convened a number of years ago to write the health curriculum. And I was also a part of the 21st grad, 21st Century Graduate Group. So I have a lot of experience to bring to the table, and I'm really excited to be able to get involved again and to give back. As a social worker, I created a child sexual abuse prevention program that I've been implementing across the county, and I still do this sometimes, you know, since 1999. So I'm well acquainted with the county. I've been active in the community for over 20 years. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. I do want to reiterate as well how important this election is, and I do want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to speak our minds and talk with all of our community members. I can't say enough that I'm actually a product of this community. I actually grew up here. I spent nearly almost all my life in this district. I actually went to here in Lewisville Elementary School, Lewisville Middle School, Monarch High School, and then Fairview High School. And what's, what's motivated me to want to run is the, my innate desire to want to implement positive change, and I really do think we can use and capitalize on a student's perspective. It's not something that's currently used on our board, and I think that if we have any opportunity to capitalize on different perspectives, that's something that we should explore. I do want to give back to the district that gave me so much because of, of the amazing education I've received, and with all the work with my family and the educators, I'm able to sit in this seat today and represent the community that gave me so much. I, I think we desperately need to include a student's perspective. I've seen how things are run on the inside and how our policies have affected not only me, but my peers as well. I represent the voice of a mother, so I am a parent myself, and with a 15-month-old who eventually go to school here, I really do want to make this place that gave me so much the best community it can be. I believe that a thriving education is at the center of a thriving community, and I really do believe in upholding public education, and I believe I'm a good voice for that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Donna Myers, and thank you all for being here and wanting to hear what we have to say in person rather than read all about us on our websites. I, I enjoy being able to speak in person. I'm not the best speaker, but I have, before I started my work in BVSD, I worked for Boulder Community Hospital. I was their Director of Special Education for Dakota Ridge Academy. When I came to work for BVSD, I've worked in many capacities for many years inside BVSD. I retired in May. I know BVSD from inside out. By outside, I mean my three sons went to school here from grades kindergarten through 12th grade. My middle son went to the Vocational Technical Education Program and was Cisco Networking. It launched him into a career that he's, he's not currently in networking, but he built satellites for ball aerospace. Anyway, I volunteered in their classrooms when they were in elementary school. I was a band mom for 12 years. I sewed many students' uniforms. I fed many students at the band competitions, and I not only did that, but I ran the garage sale. So that's the outside, but on the inside, I've taught many students. I taught English language learners. I taught special education. I taught Language Arts and Social Studies. Many classrooms I've been involved in, but I've also been on many, many committees where I've served as a team member on building committees. I helped design the transition center over there. Oh, my goodness, I'm out of time. I'll say more later.
Thank you very much for hosting us. My name is Raj Rawat. So I think the question is, who are we? Are we people of consequence? What have we done to deserve and ask that we have the legitimate right to lead a school board? So I want to share this with you, that education, in my mind, is the shining path for students' dreams, aspirations, and goals. All my life, I've been one of those people that's been called a big dreamer, and that's what I think we've forgotten. We've forgotten to dream big, and that's what I want to speak about, inspiration and being big. What have I done? For 20 years, I worked for Xerox, IBM, big companies, huge projects, but that's not what I want to talk about, because those were successful. What was important to me was building trust and building people, and that's what I've done ever since. I wrote a book. It's called Find Your Everest Before Someone Chooses It For You. It's in schools, and the kids are saying, "I wish I had this, this book when I was in seventh or eighth grade. That's when I started to think about what I wanted to do." By the way, this book has received, has been received by 12-year-olds who love it, and 86-year-old doctors who say this is what ignited, reignited my passion when I, even after I retired. So that's what my life is about. It's about inspiring, thinking big, doing big things. I am the executive in residence for an engineering program next spring to talk to master students about how they should find their Everest. I'm a parent of two incredible BVSD students who went to Montessori school here, community Montessori. They went to Boulder High School. They went to charter Summit Charter School. That's what I want to do, is bring that kind of excitement to schools.
Thank you. My name is Dean Vlahos, and my involvement in public schools has been as a lifelong supporter. I grew up in Fort Collins, went through the public school system there, and my family has been deeply rooted in education. My father was a professor at Colorado State University. My only sibling, a sister, is a lecturer at Indiana University. My wife is a teacher currently in the BVSD school system as a choir director over at Fairview High School, and thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate that. And our son has now decided also to become an educator and has began his freshman year at UNC. So we've had some fantastic dinner conversations about education, and this is a chance for me to be on the school board, basically to give back to this community and to, and to serve the people, the students, and the teachers as we try and provide the best education as we can for students. Professionally, I'm an environmental engineer. I work in water quality. I've worked with a consulting firm now for over 28 years, trying to solve water management problems in this state and in other states, too. And I think these skills that I have as an engineer, my experience in hiring, evaluating, and managing people, dealing with projects with complex budgets, and then just being in a profession that requires some fact-based and analytical decision-making, I think those are, are good qualities to have as a board member, and I'm excited to be able to use that. In the public school system, my direct involvement has been primarily as a parent volunteer, and that's been fun. I enjoyed the field trips, the science fairs, the outdoor education experience, and I'm currently also still helping out in the school system with my other life, which is as a musician and playing with some of the fine arts programs in the high schools and in the middle schools, too. So it gives me a wonderful chance to interact with the kids on a frequent basis. So, thank you.
Okay, Kitty, we'll start with you on this question. In your own words, what is the role of school board members and the superintendent, and how will you strengthen the team of eight composed of seven board members and the superintendent?
The role of the school board is to do just a few things. Hire and supervise the superintendent, adopt curriculum and policy, and adopt the budget. The school board members are the link between the district and the community, but what the school board does not do is get involved in the details of running the district. I've served on, sorry, I've worked at nonprofits that have had boards that have tried to get way too involved in what was going on, and it's unhealthy and it doesn't work. So I'm very clear on what a board member's role is. The superintendent is the CEO of the school district. He or she makes the daily decisions to run the district. They hire and supervise senior staff and responds to demands of all constituencies. How I'd strengthen the team, I'm a strong independent thinker, good communicator. I can analyze issues, form opinions. And I honor timelines.
So the role of the board is to serve as a representative of the community and provide direction, ensure that the district is being run as effective, effectively and efficiently as possible. Now, the superintendent should serve, or is, the position is to be the executive director of the school district. Now, what's important is those two have a collaborative and professional working relationship to ensure that the district is, is functioning as it should be. Now, I, I will promise, and I think what I bring to the table is, I want to share a common goal, and I do share the common goal of our district, and I have recent experience of being inside our classrooms. I have a willingness to communicate, and I think it's important that the board members and our superintendent are able to have communication across lines and work with one another openly for the common goal, to uphold the common goal of the district.
Well, the Colorado revised statutes does define what our role is or the role of the school board is, and I will follow that, those responsibilities. Setting policy is something that happens over a long period of time, but, and, but hiring and supervising, I don't even like to think of it as supervising the superintendent, because I like to think of, we've hired professionals. We trust the professionals, and we work as a team. Reagan said it well, trust but verify. How do we verify our professionals? We verify them by looking at the data that they bring to the board and say, "Is this working?", not afraid to look at what's not working and change it. I, I think I could, I, I'm a great team player. I currently serve on the board of the Potter's Guild, and I work well with them as well.
We're talking about our kids. At the end of the day, that's what it is. So from a board and superintendent perspective, I think what we need to do is set impossible goals, absolutely impossible goals, and achieve them. And I've seen this in spades. I've seen it in companies. I've seen it in private lives. I've seen it on the boards of organizations that I've served. To do this, first, earn trust. Second, listen. Validate. Find the facts, and have a dialogue. Spar. In the end, inspire. All my life, I've heard, "You have infectious enthusiasm", but you know that's not hollow, and that's not hot air. It is because people see a drive in me for clarity, for facts, for curiosity, and for respect of team, and that's what I'd like to see our board and our leadership do, is to inspire impossible goals.
I think we've heard quite nicely the role of the school board, to develop policy that's going to affect the overall operation of the district. We govern. We don't micromanage. That was, that's what the board does. But more importantly, how is it going to accomplish this? The board and the superintendent is a team together. We have to have some common goals. We're not identical, but we need to work together, and that is generated by respect for each other, being able to communicate, and having the first instinct of asking why instead of telling somebody what to do. And I think that can have a very positive relationship on, on the way the board works. Another thing that is important to remember is to rely on our resources. Believe it or not, the board might not know everything, and we need to know where to find those resources to be able to give us the information where we can make some very fundamental and very important decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is...
Oh. It's okay.
I apologize.
I know. Yeah, I think that there seems to be a really strong understanding of the role of the school board. I think it's, just from the last four years, it's harder, easier said than done. It's hard to find that balance of what is micromanaging and what is governance, and I think that any board will spend time with their superintendent, and I think the important thing is to take the time to talk and understand what are the priorities of the board members. We each do come in with some kind of agenda. I, I mean, we like to say that we don't, but there's something that we're interested in, that we're, that piques our interest, and we want to find out more. I do think that we should allow space for that, and, and then I hope that by a lot of conversation, committing time to retreats, and also building trust with the new superintendent will help it be a more functional board.
Apologies for jumping the gun there. This time, we'll start with Alexandra, and the question is, what do you think BVSD is currently doing well? What do you think needs to change? Do you have any specific changes you want to make in school district policies, programs, or the various school curricula being offered? If so, what changes do you want to make and why? And the candidates will have two minutes.
I have to fit all of that in two minutes. So, it's, for me, I think we're doing a lot of amazing things. At the forefront, something that first comes to mind is the importance of technology. As a millennial, I like to see, and I understand the importance of everyday technology and career development and, and how those two things intertwine. I like to see that our district is moving towards making that more accessible for our students and implementing, implementing that into our classrooms. I think that's something that we should continue to develop. Additionally, I like to see that as a community and as a district, we are very open-minded about our students and about our community members. We accept all lifestyles, and we, we want to provide, provide support for the students who need it. Having a district and being able to find our own place in that district is a beautiful What do I want to change? Now, I really do think on the note of technology that it can be used as a tool to personalize education. So when we're talking about the achievement gap, it's not just using technology as a supplemental tool in the classroom, but really using it to our advantage, really milking it for all it's worth, and trying to personalize education for the students that need it. I do really, I am a big advocate for early childhood education. Again, with the achievement gap, getting ahead of that, as a, as a mother of a young, young little girl, I can understand now the importance already of really starting that. I think that's where we can really aim to improve in the district, is instituting more early childhood education. Additionally, I think that our SIM students can be left behind, and I don't think that we should have one student that slips through the cracks. I want to have a larger focus on students who need academic help or support, or who are marginalized or are facing outside stressors or issues. These students need and deserve our attention. I like to implement a student program, a teacher-student program, and reinstitute our climate surveys.
We're doing so many things well as a district, and I'm proud of the things that we're doing well. We offer so many opportunities to students. We have AP classes, IB classes, vocational, technical education. I was proud of the fact that I brought into the district Project Search. I coordinated with them. Some people don't know what Project Search is, but I, I went to work to help connect Boulder Community Hospital with our students. I coordinated the 18-to-21-year-old program. We brought students in to work at Boulder Community Hospital to do internships, and many of those students were hired because of that. We've, I've connected students throughout the district in, in various jobs, but we, we are, there are some things we need to improve on. I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, but we have to make sure that all students succeed. We have to do that by regular progress monitoring. We have to know, one of the things I want to say is, in our VOTEC program, I tried to get so many of our students in that program, and I couldn't get them in. You know, why I couldn't get them in is because they could not pass LA 9 and Algebra 1. It's a criteria, because in our VOTEC programs, they, the credits articulate with our community college. If you can't read at a certain level, and you can't do math at a certain level, you can't get into the program. Some of my students, I would help them retake the class, and they still couldn't get in. So I think what we have to do as a district is have that early intervention so that our kids can be launched into the careers they want to go into and into the colleges that they want to attend. Thank you.
Our students need sleep. Let me repeat. Our students need sleep. They're sleep-deprived today. Our students need relief from stress. They are stressed by things at home and at school. Our students are asking that they be given an opportunity to dream. They're demanding, "Give us people who can inspire us." They're saying, "Send me to mentors who can answer my questions about things I'm passionate about. Let me have time so I can go home and see on YouTube what my passion is, and because right now I don't have the time, I don't get enough sleep." Our students are asking, "Give us an opportunity so they can find their Everest." That is what we need to do. How are we going to do that? We're going to do that by showing them that the shining path to their dreams and aspirations and goals is school. We're going to do that by showing them that there are resources they can go to and speak with, not just access on, on computers alone, but with assistance, they will get there. And that's what we need to do. We've done amazing things. We have the best teachers on the planet, but we don't give them respect. We don't give them time to rejuvenate. We don't give them time to regenerate their ideas. Things have happened. We've had dot-com. We've had social media. We've got mobile apps. We've got drones. We've had viral videos, and none of that, our teachers have had, had the opportunity to participate. Why? We need to respect our teachers. We need to give them time. We need to give them an opportunity to be wise so they can teach our children better. Thank you.
So what is BVSD doing well? Let's think about this. Most of the kids doing well academically, and they have good options following graduation. That's not true for everyone, but for the most part. The teachers, administrators, and staff, they have good, solid relationships, and we see this by the community's response. This community here participates and is very generous for the district, too. Now, of course, things can change, and we're, we're looking at specific policies and programs, et cetera. That can, that can be a long list. Some of the ones that occur to me are to basically have less contentious relationships among board members and staff, and again, to improve that, that type of communication. The programs, as an engineer, this, this kind of excites me. I'm heavily interested in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and one of the things that we can provide for those students within that realm is twofold. Number one is students to have stability, and number two is for students to have opportunities. If we look at changing our programs and our policies with those two tenants in mind, I think that would be very positive for the kids. And in regards to STEM, the opportunities are, perhaps college might not be the best option. Maybe the kid has a fascination or an interest in something else, and we've mentioned the Career and Technical Education Center, you know, where they, they're doing some amazing things there in computers and forensics and landscaping, all sorts of activities that can pique the student's interest outside of graduation. Because as a board member, we're going to shake their hands at graduation, but that's not it for them. They need to go on and take what they've learned from this school district, and they're going to be applying it for the rest of their lives. So those, specific changes in those programs are very important to think through.
So I think that overall BVSD is a well-run district. The board has talked over the last four years about things that could be done better, and we had a bunch of goals around the district itself. One was to attract and retain teachers, and we're doing a really good job at that. And we obviously made administrative change last spring, so that was, that's a big change, and I think it's hard to say where we are right now. And again, it's been good to have the feedback from Dr. Stevenson on how that's going. In terms of specific changes, I think the, the things I'm looking at are mostly around the achievement. around the achievement gap, and just making sure that when we set goals, that they're clear. When we set goals five years ago, I don't know if they were clear enough, and I think this made it more difficult for the board as a, as a, as a unit to track the progress that was going on in the district. So I think when we revisit the five-year goals, which will start happening in December, and we'll include an engagement, a community engagement piece, we need to think about clarity for the board relationship, for the board superintendent relationship, and also to make sure we have alignment that goes on down from staff and teachers. So, um, that would be my, I think my biggest goal as a board member is really around goals.
We are really fortunate to live in a great school district. We have many award-winning schools. We have very high graduation rates, some of the highest in the state, high SAT scores, high number of teachers who are nationally board certified. BVSD is also doing well with special ed in terms of funding because we use the general fund to backfill, which most districts do not do. Backfill, I mean, from the money that is not coming in from the state that ought to be. So what needs to change? We clearly need to address the achievement gap. That needs to change, and I think one way to do that is by allocating more resources to students who are living in poverty, students who are ELL learners, and students who are in special ed. I would like to see full-day kindergarten and preschools in all the schools. You know, it was talked on, talked, talked about before about the primary, oh no, that was this afternoon, talking about reading in the primary grades, and full-day kindergarten has been shown to be very helpful for kids. I think we need to change the way we do testing. Right now, the tests we take are summative tests, which tells you what a child can do on that day at that time, and the results come in way too late for teachers to do anything with that information. I really support the common assessment that's being developed by the district because those will be formative and summative. We'll be able to learn, how did the child get to that answer? What were they thinking? And the results will come back in time for teachers to be able to use them to address some of the issues that kids might need to be addressed. So, sorry. Didn't finish the question. So, I'm not running on an agenda in terms of changing policy, curriculum, those sort of things. What I want to do is work collaboratively with the board and with the administration to solve the problems and address the issues that are facing the district. You know, Tina talked about setting goals. Providing specific solutions to specific problems is not the role of a board member. So I would really like to be just working collaboratively, collaboratively, and relying on the professionals to bring us what they think the solutions are and why.
Okay, the next question, we'll start with Donna. What are your goals and vision for addressing and creating opportunities for students with special needs? For example, behavioral problems, students, learning challenges, English as a second language, students who face the problems of poverty or family problems at home. Thank you. And you'll have one minute.
That's a lot to address in one minute. But my vision, my dream is that all students succeed, that the whole group that was just mentioned. I want to see them all on an upward trajectory. Every student should be able to make one year's progress each year they're in school. In grades kindergarten through third, you're learning to read. From fourth grade on, you're reading to learn. I had a son that struggled learning to read. I really had to work to get him extra help. It was difficult because in order to get services from special ed, you have to fall below the 12th percentile. If our students get in seventh grade and they're reading at fifth-grade level and handed a fifth-grade level textbook, even our, our English language learners, it's difficult. They can't do it. We have to do regular progress monitoring. My time's up. I want to talk to you more, so much more about this.
A lot of the students that have behavioral problems have an underlying issue. It's not that they're not intelligent, but they're not engaged. Let me repeat, we need to engage the students so that they can start to see school as the shining path for their dreams, aspirations, and goals. I have seen this happen. I have seen poor, poor students, disabled students, study in hardship and rise to the top. Top doesn't mean just money. Top means having options that were important to them, options that were important to their reality. I'd like to see that we spark and ignite and show them the passion that school is a place to gravitate, not someplace to endure, where they come to get education and are excited.
I love that sound. I believe behavioral issues are something that cannot be thrown only to the teacher in the classroom. Something tells me that students have behavioral problems outside the hours of eight to three. This means we have to involve the families with this also, too, and the teachers and the administrators to help find these solutions for those children. In terms of problems with poverty and family problems, et cetera, let's get some of the community organizations involved and, and working with partnerships on this, too. Again, expand our resources that can be able to help and to apply those that have these particular problems. So much of what kids face in school starts outside of their school. And then finally, for learning issues, a key point, I believe, is not separate these kids from the rest of the general students. Integrate them within there so both can learn from each other. It might require different materials, but the topics can be the same and enhance that, that learning.
So on this question, I, one of the things that strikes me, my middle schooler goes to Casey Middle School, which is a really diverse school. And the times that I've visited, I, I just feel like every teacher is trying so hard to help every child in that school, and there are children with a lot of challenges and obstacles. So in addressing this question, which we talk about frequently, I would really want to get more teachers engaged to understand what their gaps are, and also then work on and continue a goal that was set five years ago on community partnerships. Organizations like Dream Big, the, you know, some of the organizations with the Community Foundation, I Have a Dream, are really tackling this issue, and I think to continue to work collaboratively with teachers who are on the front line and with the community organizations for the time that's outside of the school might help with this.
Well, I agree with everything Tina just said, and I would like to add another partnership that I would really like to see go forward in the East County, and that's the district I will be representing, is to get family resource schools in Broomfield. Right now, that's a partnership between the city of Boulder and the district, and they do a lot of good work. So I think it would be great if we could move that east. I really support the student-based resources allocation for kids so that it is, so that we give more money to kids, again, as I said before, with, who are living in poverty, of special ed or English language learners. And right now, we know so much more about mental health in children and how mental health issues can cause behavioral and learning challenges. And I think that's something that we can partner with people in the community, with mental health professionals, with parents, but to help understand. When I was teaching, we didn't know any of this stuff. You know, behavior problems were just behavior problems. But we are doing much better now.
I also agree that partnering, partnering with outside organizations will be of great aid to the board, partnering with like the Community Foundation and the Family Learning Center, like we see in Boulder, like Kitty talked about. I think that is important that we, we work on that with. What we're seeing, though, is these external stressors in regards to funding with Title One, and that means now forty, we have to reach forty percent of children on free and reduced lunch in order to get that funding. So this really becomes something that we need to talk about on a budget basis and really nail down how we can allocate resources towards the best programs for our students and making sure that our students with these external stressors, that they're starting at a similar starting place, that we're not having kids that are, are over here and kids that are starting the race back here. We really need to equal the playing field and lift all of our students up. We need to invest in more programs and really dive deep into the budget.
The next question is, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing the school district today in the near future and the long term? And in light of maybe one minute not being enough, we're going to give you two minutes. And we start with Raj.
I don't know what to do with an extra minute now. That's such luxury. So, I'm going to start in the same place. Dream big. We don't dream big enough. When we set a goal to climb an Everest, we think about life, survival. We think about being strong. When you go to a small mountain, you think about food and entertainment and photographs. So think big so that we can focus on right goals. So what do the right goals mean? I think that what that means for us is we need to figure out, are we applying ten pedals to go one foot? Or we apply one pedal and go ten feet? Where are the places on the planet where they produce the largest number of scholars for the smallest amount of investment? Where are the schools that create the best teachers, where the teachers are most satisfied? Where are those benchmarks? And so I would say, we need to dream big. We need to dream big now, in the mid, middle term, and in the long run, because that is going to set up for us the right kind of benchmarks that we can monitor, around which we can build coalitions, around which we can build trust, and around which we can come and tell our students, this is your shining path. This is the way to achieve your dreams and aspirations and goals. Thank you.
I think the immediate challenges are pretty obvious. We need to hire a superintendent. That's going to happen now. Next spring will be contract negotiations with teachers. In the near future, I, I see the driving factor basically being money and dealing with the budget. It is a limited pie, and that allocation of funds, we still need to maintain that we're assuring that all students are served and positioned for success. And this is just not in the classroom, but again, all those experiences that our students can have in, in academics and as well as in arts, athletics, et cetera. And then we have special programs that we have to throw in there, such as special education, English language learners, talented and gifted. That's a lot to manage. It's a complex budget that we're going to have to deal with, as well as just governing that existing bond, too. Longer term, we've heard some allusions to the achievement gap. That's a long-term problem, and that is a serious problem, and it's a real problem. And it's been here for quite a while, too, to address on how can we get our students to the same starting position when they begin their school careers? That means early childhood education. We need to look at ages three to five to see what resources we can implement with families and through the community to get them set up for success for kids that don't have some of those chances, that are, that are, you know, hungry, have housing issues, et cetera. Another longer-term issue that I see having to come with is to address the issues with the standardized testing. What I have seen there, you know, historically, there's been a lot of changes in the testing. We've all seen that as, as parents and as teachers and as administrators, too. And then, and even in the Boulder Valley School District system, too, we've seen not understanding the value of test and having kids opt out, especially at the high school levels. I think it's important that we need to have a strong fundamental test that we can give to all students so we can give meaningful data and encourage them to participate and understand what changes for future programs need to be made. Thank you.
Okay. So I don't think there's one biggest challenge. We have some immediate needs. One is hiring the superintendent. The other is the union contract coming up in the spring, and, and those are big activities that the board needs to face. Over, we have a, sort of the hangnail of BVSD is the achievement gap with our low-income students. That gap hasn't changed since I've been on the board and since I even was involved in the SAC and DAC committees prior to my joining the school board. So that's a personal challenge that I think we need to talk a lot about and set some clearer goals around so that we can measure what we're doing and making sure that we agree on the goals. In the long term, there is a, you know, we have been able to, through our contract, retain, attract and retain teachers, but there is a growing teacher shortage across the state. I don't know when it's going to hit BVSD, but at some point it will. We need to keep an eye on that, and we need to be careful how we work with our teachers over time to make sure that we remain an attractive district for the best teachers in the state. Thank you.
As has been said before, the most pressing thing facing the district right now is hiring a superintendent and finding someone who reflects the values of our community, someone who can be a strong leader, and someone who can really inspire staff to do their best. Another challenge we have, and we've talked about it before, is low-achieving students, and I'm particularly concerned about the immigrant community and those who come from Spanish-speaking countries. I think it's important that in addition to allocating more resource, resources, that we are able to reach them in a culturally competent way with stu, I mean, sorry, students, teachers and staff who can speak Spanish, with teachers and staff who appreciate, not just sort of know about, but appreciate the culture. That's the way we're going to reach those kids, and I think it's something we're probably not doing quite enough of. Long term, my biggest concern is, is funding and the stability of funding, because right now, what I've heard is that Boulder Valley is thirty million dollars behind in terms of what the state should be giving us. I think it's important to relook at Tabor, look at the School Finance Act. In talking with legislators, I understand that there are things that can be done to tweak the, the equation that would bring more funding into the schools. I look forward to working with the legislature. I know our entire delegation from the county. I have experience volunteering down at the legislature, and I really look forward to doing something like that because if we don't have funding, it doesn't matter what else we want to do. Unless we get volunteers to do it, it's not going to happen.
No, I have to agree with Tina that it's not just one specific problem and one specific challenge, but rather how they're intertwined, and I, I think it's a collective grouping of them that we, that deserves our attention. Of course, at the most immediate and, and ti, in the sense of time, is we have to hire a new leader, and I'm excited to be potentially able to find that new leader. That, that is going to be really big for our district is finding, finding that person and healing any kind of wound we have currently. We all agree that we want our children to succeed, and our achievement gap needs to be addressed, it needs to be at the forefront of our attention, that's partnering with other people. I'd like to also implement something I was talking about earlier, but I ran out of time, is instituting a program that links educators and students together to help them feel more safe at school. There's been studies that have been shown that link safety and absences and student achievement. I believe that if we should improve on, or at least be able to measure our students' feelings towards school, which is our climate surveys, which I mentioned before, which are no longer around, that needs to be something that we're able to have quantitative data to measure how our students feel about school. And in turn, if we can make our students feel safer at school, they will perform better in school. We aren't really able to measure our students' feelings, and I think that that's important. Not only will that benefit them in their education, but benefit them at home as well. So in the long term, of course, we want our, we want our graduation rate to be better than it is now. In a perfect world, we want our students to all to be pushing farther past partial proficiency and proficiency. We need to be pushing that boundary, and like Raj said, we need to have those big goals. It's not setting the bar here, it's setting the bar here and really surpassing it.
I hate to sound like reiterating everyone else, but I think we all have some of the same answers. Near, we, we all know we've got to hire a new leader, a superintendent, someone that's going to inspire us and challenge us, but someone that puts our children first and is a great communicator. We'll get to that question later, but narrowing the achievement gap, I think is, it's both short-term and long-term because we make little steps at a time. We can't say, well, this will happen over a period of ten years. I would like to see it come out next year in the paper that, wow, Boulder Valley narrowed their gap somewhat, and we're making progress. and we're making progress. So, I think that we can put that on the, in the near future time limits. I think that we've shown great progress in how we've spent our money. We hired this year some behavior analysts and counselors to help with some of the behavior issues. But that takes money. It takes money to provide those resources. We have to prioritize where that money's spent. Currently, we've got a budget that's not sustainable. And we have to tell teachers, we don't, we tell parents sometimes, we don't have the money for that resource. I don't want to see us doing that. I want to see us prioritizing the money so that the resources needed are there for the teachers. Two factors are important for students to succeed. And that is, and this is what research shows us, it's hiring quality teachers, and it is reducing class sizes. That takes money. And so, once again, we're going to have to look into the way we're prioritizing where the money goes and what we need to use it for. Thank you.
Okay, our next question starts with Dean. In light of the funding gaps and shortfalls, explain your budgeting priorities, including your ideal allocation to resources for schools.
My priorities are basically, what will directly benefit the students? That's number one on the list. Whatever action we take and make the decision with money, what value are we going to get for that? The budget's complicated, and it's long, and it's going to require that board members do their homework to understand that. I feel comfortable with it. I work with large budgets and can understand trade-offs that are involved with that, too. We need to think strategically where that money is going to be spent. You know, pending any, basically miracle at the State House and through a new ballot, we're not going to see this great windfall, this great increase of funds. So, we need to know where those monies need to be moved and allocated. How are we going to do that? Well, we need to have dialogues with the people that pay, and that's the taxpayers. Understanding the priorities of this community and what is important in terms of funding. Having that dialogue with organizations and corporations in this area to see, are you willing to invest also? I think people understand that having that ample supply of funds and resources can improve our educational outcomes. We've got to deal with issues such as unfunded state and federal mandates that are put in our laps, so to speak, and we are the ones left to hang and see how we have to pay for those, too. What improves student outcomes are our teachers. They execute the education. So, understanding how the teachers, administrators, and the staff, and by staff, I mean those folks that make things run, the bus drivers, other transportation, food service, maintenance, operations, we need to know what those expectations are from those peoples relative to what we see in other school districts and what can be fair and equitable compensation for that. Yeah, it is difficult to sustain. I think the number is, what, 85% of the cost of the school district are for labor? So, that's a big number, and we need to come to grips with those groups on how we can move that forward. Thank you.
So, I think the, for me, this question really goes back to what I said before about setting goals. So, we're at a five-year reset, and first, we need to establish what our goals are, and then we need to have a discussion about how the money follows those goals. What are the resources we need to attain those goals? And I think that it's, because we haven't had that discussion yet, I can't say, you know, what the priorities are. The board will do that as a group. Obviously, the budgeting priorities are tied to student success, and they need to be measured by the outcomes of students. So, and then the other piece is, as a board, we also advocate for new funding. We often will go to the legislature and testify if there's bills around funding models. We have staff that are participating in some of the statewide discussions on the funding formulas and what impacts those would have on BVSD, so we're staying in touch with those. So, I'll leave it at that.
Well, the number I saw for personnel was 93%. So, I hope Dean's right because that gives more money to do other things with. But, and also struck me that 93% is also our graduation rate. So, I don't know if that means anything or not. We do spend most of our money on personnel. What I would like to see within that is more, we do more for our classified employees, the folks that Dean talked about, the bus drivers, food services, mechanics, everybody who is doing the work to keep things going and the people that we typically take for granted and don't see. They have not been getting raises at the same rate that the teachers are, and they're upset about it. And they don't feel valued, and they're upset about that, too, and they have a right to be. So, I think that's definitely something we need to look at, what we can do. In terms of administration hiring, I think it's really important to be listening to the teachers and the community of what do you want to have? And with teachers and staff, what support do you need from the ed center? Not just, we're going to have X number of administrators and they're going to do this. They exist to support the people who are in the trenches with the kids. And I've said this before, the kids are the most important people for the district, and the teachers are, come next. I think any kind of funding allocations that we change in terms of funding for students who have special needs needs to be based on research and not just on what we think might be a good idea. And I mentioned before the student resources allocation, I mean, yeah, the student-based resource allocation. And I'm just reading this from their document. I didn't make this up at all, but I think this is a good idea that the, with new funding, oops, I better not. Okay. But the funding would follow in order poverty, special ed, English language learners.
So, I'm looking at the BVSD expenditures by services for 2016, 2017, and I'm looking at instruction is at 69.8%. So, I'm curious where the 93 is coming from. I do think that it's important for me, at least if I'm going to be working on this budget, is really measuring how we compare to similar districts, not necessarily saying we need to match everyone else, but I think it can be a useful tool to where we need to be. My priority will always be pouring more money into the classroom. I think we need to take a look at the budget and see how, again, how we compare to other districts. And also, one thing that piques my interest is how, and the rate we are expanding administration, for example, comparatively to the rate we are expanding in, for students. So, that needs to match up. I'd like more tools to be able to, to be able to monitor the rate we are expanding, and if it's really the best use of our funds. Again, this really comes down to really sending the money to where it needs to be spent. It needs to be on retaining teachers and making sure this is an attractive place to work. I want to, I want to be here, but we want to make sure that our teachers are taken care of, our educators are taken care of, and as well as pouring more money into the resources to uplift our kids. Again, my priority will always be children, and I hope this is a group effort and really digging down deep into the issues, finding out where we can make room, and I believe we can make room. We need to shift the conversation away from, you know, well, we don't have enough money. We don't have enough money. And we don't. I agree. And we need to make those big institutional changes, but for what we have right now, let's deal with the cards that we've been dealt and really focus down what can we do right now for our kids and our teachers and our district.
Funding issues are so important. I think, I don't know anyone or any school district that's ever said, we have too much money. My kids are always saying, I want more money. Fortunately, they're now off my payroll. But I, when we look at Amendment 23 and we realize we're not going to get that negative factor, and we, BVSD put out a brochure or a flyer that said, this is what we could have done if we would have gotten that money. I think we've got to throw that away and say, but we don't have it. We're going to have to work within what we do have and provide the resources that are needed for students to succeed. We have to look forward. Ideally, I'd like all of our schools to get everything they need. Every year, I sat on committees and my boss would, we would sit around the table in special ed, and we would talk about the FTE that was being allocated. And principals would come back and say, we don't have enough. We don't have enough. We can't serve our kids with what we've got. So, they would write their appeals, and we would go back to the drawing board trying to find out if we could provide more positions for, to serve the students. I hate to see that appeal process. I would love to be able to see us find the money so that every school has the teachers they need, the resources they need to move our students towards success. Too many times, parents are told, we don't have the money. We can't implement that program. We can't help your student in that way. And if you watched the board meetings this last spring, you found a lot of parents were told no. And when they finally made their appeal to the board, we were able to, they were able to get the money. They needed $200,000 to fund, to help those students.
You know, I have to say this, what an honor it is to be with people like this. This is a great testament to our community. So many volunteer, no-paid job people willing to contribute and commit. We're talking about money, budget, superintendent, long-term problems, testing, controls. These are minutia. We are lost in minutia. We need to step back and go, what are we trying to build? The first thing that needs to be done is to build a safe environment for all students. So, every student that comes, LGBTQ plus, a person of color, whatever, is comfortable. They're willing to contribute. They feel free and welcomed. So, I think that should be the first priority. I agree with Ms. Markey when she said, we don't know what the priorities are because we haven't met yet. So, it's important to recognize, too early to talk about it. But given that, the next should be, of course, the quality of education. Teaching, treating our teachers right. They are inspirational. They are the roots. They supply learning to our students. We need to treat them right. The next is, what are those specific things that drive progress? And there are tools and information and analytics that tell us what they are. It comes down to igniting the students' drive to learn. Let me say that again. The shining path is the education, and that path leads to dreams, aspirations, and goals. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, what are you looking for in a new superintendent? And how would you plan to contribute to a positive working relationship between the board, the superintendent, and BVEA? And we'll start with Tina. Two minutes.
Thanks. So, in the new superintendent, I'm looking for a superintendent who really values the board relationship, is a transparent and person, someone who loves to communicate. I can, I would like, especially at the beginning of the relationship, for the person to be an oversharer of information so that we feel that we have a deep knowledge and understanding of their goals and their thoughts and ideas. One of the things that we talked about when we were looking at search firms was, can we also find someone who's had past, who has a track record? And that was an interesting discussion, and I think that's something I'm looking for as well is, what are some of the things that they've done in the past that we think would benefit the Boulder Valley School District? And another thing, I think, Mr. Rawat is rubbing off on me. I think I'm going to look for someone with a little bit of passion, and I would like to see, you did it, Ra, you did it. So, who's going to maybe bring some of that energy? I personally only talk in a monotone, and I just drone, and it would be nice to not have that, someone like me, all the time. In order to contribute to a positive working relationship, I think I will approach this relationship with optimism, not with skepticism, not with wariness, not with suspicion. I want to start this on the right foot. I want to believe in the person that we hire. I want to believe in the teachers that we hire, the administrators that we hire. Because I don't think, if we don't start out in that place of trust, I don't think we should even proceed.
What I'd like to see in a new superintendent, in addition to what I had said earlier, but somebody, I think the most important thing was to have really good communication skills. Someone who will inspire the employees. We need a leader who makes people want to come and work and do their best, and a leader who gives them the tools they need in order to do that. A couple of weeks ago, we met with the classified employees, and they were saying that the superintendents in general have not come to meet with them or talk to them or see what's important to them or make them even feel like they were important at all. So, I think that's something I'd like to see, a superintendent who values talking with all of the employee groups. I think the person should be flexible, should be innovative. Again, what Tina said, being, no, what did you say? Passionate. Right. Now, how would I contribute to a positive working relationship? The first thing I want to do is assume that everybody who's coming to the table has the best interests of students at heart. We may not all agree on what that is, but we all are going to have the best intentions. Open and honest communication is key to building any kind of relationship. If you have a question, you ask it of the person. You don't ask it of, you know, somebody you heard from. And it's really important to get at what, why somebody is saying what they're saying. Why is this important to you? I might not understand why something's important to you, so I'm going to ask you to tell me more about it because I want to understand, and I think that's key for any kind of positive relationships. And I, independent thinking, I will bring to the board and to the relationships. And just a good analytic mind, being able to analyze situations and come up with possible solutions.
I love that we're talking about passion. My big motivator for wanting to run is a love for my community. If we can find someone who shares our values and loves this community as much as we all do, I think that's a really great step in the right direction. Of course, we want someone with great leadership skills, someone who can communicate. And I also agree with Tina, finding someone who has a proven track record, someone who has, someone who has been able to show improvement where they've worked before. We want that kind of leadership here. We have a lot of complex issues and a lot of stakeholders and a lot of community members who really care about our district, and I think we need to hire someone who really has a deep understanding of that and has a willingness to collaborate with those stakeholders and has a willingness to understand those issues and to want to work with people and to want to listen and see the full picture. Again, I think it's important that they share our common goals. We have a vision here. We have a mission here. It's written out. It's all over. It is clear as can be what our mission is, and I think we all, if we all can share that, we can make really incredible things happen here. But I think there has to be a strong foundation, is hiring someone who has those common interests and ideas, and then we can move forward and making sure, again, we won't always agree with one another, but if we have that strong foundation, I think we can move mountains. I do want to, I think I can contribute to a positive working relationship between the board, superintendent, and BVEA because we all have a vested interest in the success of our students and the success of our district. Again, a strong education is at the center of a thriving community, and I want to collaborate in making sure that we all are communicating with one another, even in times we don't agree. But even if we don't agree, let's find a way to overcome that, and we share this common goal. What do we bring to the table that's different, and how can we overcome this and find a solution together? Nice.
Well, if I were going to put a wordle up that we use in our classrooms, and we put all the words up, and the word that comes out the most from all of us was a proven track record. And there's a saying that says, the best predictor of future performance is past performance. So, I'd want us to look carefully at what the past performance looked like. I would want a superintendent that inspires us, engages us, and almost would hang the same plaque up that I've carried around in my life, said, there they go. I must hasten after them, for I am their leader. Doesn't look like, that's someone that launches us all off and lets us do our job. So, I would look for someone of integrity, someone that's honest. So I would look for someone of integrity, someone that's honest. Here's all my words that I'm looking at, respectful. Here's one I put in, maybe you'll laugh on this one, but tweets responsibly and respectfully. Engages, inspires, listens. What, what'll I bring to the table? How will I do that? I'm a great team player. If you look at my record, it's not just what I say. Ask the teachers I've worked with in the district, ask my department, my bosses. I was evaluated very highly, always, as a team player. I was called in to help people problem solve. I think if you look at my record, you'll see that I don't just talk the talk, I've walked the walk, and I will be good at collaborating, coordinating. So I won't even take up my whole two minutes.
You know, one benefit of working globally with different companies, and in different environments, is you realize, no company has unlimited budgets or unlimited talent. So they work with three lists. The first list is your dream list. If you could have anything happen, what, what would it be? The second list is, you must meet these criteria, otherwise the business just doesn't work. And the third list is, okay, it's nice to have. What's the reason? What happens is that when you have these lists, it allows you to share, you have a common goal, a common vision, you can step back and say, "These are my priorities," and then you can start collaborating and prioritizing. In order for us to even start thinking about a superintendent, I think it's very premature to start with, because we need to have a clear idea of what our priorities are. And only then, we can start to see which ones of the candidates has a passion. Thank you, Ms. Markey, for that word. Passion for what we're trying to do. Who's going to move the ball in concert with the rest of the team? The board is not alone in making this decision, the teachers are critical in this participation too. So it's the board, and the teachers' association, and the parents, whose requirements should be represented. The example that I think of is, when you have a well-practiced team, they can take a shot from anywhere, because they know they can trust you. And that's what we need to do, is to have a trusted environment to make that decision.
I think one thing we need to remember, the superintendent is not only a position, it's a person. I want to look for traits in that person. I have three in mind. First one is to be accountable, is to represent the best interests of students, teachers, and the staff. The second one is a desire to be collaborative. Yes, they're in a leadership position, but being a leader means taking those with you too for success. And the third one, I've heard passion a lot, I'll take it one step further, I want this person to be creative. I want them to think of things that we've never even thought of yet. That's gonna be tough to do, because this is, again, this district thinks a lot in that respect. But let them have some new ideas, some interesting ideas, things that we might wrinkle our nose at to begin with, but that actually work for the students. Experience is key. This is a unique district with nice, I don't think it should be an experimental ground for a new superintendent, but it should be someone who's well-versed in perhaps a district this size, with the, with the style of teaching, with the style of teachers, and with the student composition and makeup, I think that's important. Another factor is, yes, the board will be selecting the superintendent, but it's not just for the board, it's for the community. This is a leader of the community. We need to involve the BVEA, we need to involve teachers, we need all members for the Impact Board, we need DPC, the district advisory committees, other groups that we have, we need to have that support going forward, so everyone is comfortable with this decision. Because I think our end goal, and I hope that we can have as a board, a clear and unanimous decision on who this person is. I think that would be important, moving forward for this district, and it's an exciting thing to deal with. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
So as, as potential board members, we're gonna throw you a curveball. We're gonna give you a little bit extra time for your closing statements, but we want to add a bonus question. And Dean, you, you kinda, actually, we're right in line with what we were thinking, but as a board member, how are you going to ensure that you're representing your community? And so, we'll give you a little bit extra time, up to three minutes, to finish your closing statements with anything you'd like to add that you didn't have a chance to, but then also answer that question. And, yes, as a board member, how will you ensure you're representing the community? And Kitty, I'm sorry, but we're starting with you, so we're not giving you a lot of time to think about it.
Well, thank you again, everyone, for attending this candidate forum, and as you consider your vote, I want you to consider that leadership, independent thinking are important things for BVSD. I am really proud to be endorsed by a number of organizations, the Boulder Valley Education Association, the Blue Flower Fund, the Labor Council, and I got 100% from Planned Parenthood. Now, how would I represent, make sure my community's represented? I plan to visit the schools a couple of times each year, just to talk, because I know that's what the current board member Jenny does, and she advised that that was a good idea. Also, I'm very involved in the community I live in, which is Superior, I'm involved in the Chamber of Commerce, and I have been less involved in Broomfield, but I have picked that up. I do know a number of people, I've been at a number of events there, and I definitely plan to keep doing that, so that I can be there for people who just want to come up and say, "Hey, this is what I think." The other thing I really want to do is, through Facebook perhaps, is just set times on occasion to say, "Hey, come and talk to me, tell me what you think." And that's what I've been asking people as I'm running, and it's remarkable to me how few people tell me what they think should be done, because my experience in the past is, everybody tells you what they think should be done. But I plan to be very, very open to hearing from the folks in the district.
I've actually had the opposite experience. I've had a lot of parents and community members request my time on my Facebook page, and I feel honored that people don't feel afraid to come and talk to me, and express that their feelings and concerns. So I've had a lot of people, and the outreach is great, and I encourage people, encourage more constituents to approach me, and let's talk about the issues, and I want to hear from you. I think I represent, I'm in a lot of, I'm in a lot of mom groups, and, and student groups, and I think I, I represent our students closely. I graduated in 2013, don't do the math, it really wasn't that long ago. But I represent that part of the, of the district that doesn't necessarily get a voice, and I think it's comforting to parents and students to be able to approach me and say, "Hey, we, we share a little bit more common ground." I was in the classroom not that long ago. I do want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and believing in, in what we all care so much about. I, I do believe that no team, no successful team, has just every player with similar, similar traits. We really need to capitalize on diverse perspectives, and I think from then, we share our common goals, we come from different backgrounds, we represent different ideas, we can all come together and make really amazing things happen in our district. I have been proudly endorsed by the Daily Camera, which is very exciting, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to serve my community and give back to the district that gave so much to me. I hope my daughter goes here, I know she will, but it's so exciting to be able to sit up here. I'm a little shell-shocked, but I'm, I'm happy to be here in front of you today. Thank you.
I'm also happy to be endorsed by the Daily Camera and the Boulder Weekly, and one of their reasons, rationales for endorsing me is saying that I could come to the table and hit the ground running. I have a wealth of knowledge in the educational field. I just opened up the magazine last night, NEA's magazine, and read their article about every school board needs to have a lifelong educator on it, and representing, and I can, I can be that person. I, I come to you with an educator's perspective. How will I relate to the community? Look at my track record, I was the coordinator for the 18 to 21 program, I put a list together of 75 agencies in our district that we worked with and communicated with regularly. I would, I pulled them together in parent engagement network meetings, where all of our agencies sat there and said, "Here's what I can offer you, here's what, we, here's where we can help," whether it was mental health services or housing services, we were able to pull those people in to help our district. I, I listened to parents. In fact, just this week, I not only listened to parents, but teachers. I had a teacher email me the other day, asking me what my stance was on several things, and we ended up share, going back and forth on the email, and she, I can't share her name, because she wanted to leave it private, but she said she was overwhelmed, because her classroom of third graders, she had 32, and said it's the biggest she's ever had, and was frustrated. So I connect very well with the community. I had an email from a teacher, several teachers, because I just left the district, I have a lot of contacts with the teachers, and, and I have their support. They are, they email me, and one just emailed me this morning, saying, "I just filled out my ballot." So I, I can come and work together with teachers, the community, the staff, and bring good, good information to the table, research-based evidence on what it takes to move our students forward to successful outcomes. Thanks.
So how much time do we have? Three minutes. I started out with a question. I think the community should ask us, have we lived a life of consequence? Why do we deserve to be here? My life is about inspiration. It is based on reality. There is a difference in inspiration that's hot air, there's a difference when it's based in reality and hard facts. That's what my life is about. It's in here. And this book is resonating, as I said, with 10-year-olds and 80-year-olds. People who want to find their passion are finding that this book stirs their curiosity and pushes them forward. There are reviews on Amazon that will tell you that. But I am an immigrant. My story is the story of America's all-positive contributions to somebody who came here when I was 20. My children will not have the same story. They didn't make decisions like I did, alone, away from family. They have lived a protected life, unlike me. So once again, let me go back to say what I've been saying all evening, we need to dream big, we need to dream of Everest, and we need to forget about small things. How will I represent my community? I've been talking about one thing all evening, showing that education is the shining path to dreams, aspirations, and, help me, goals. My life is what it is, because I've learned one thing from my mentors. If you want people to follow, you have to create heroes. Learn to create heroes out of people who do a great job. That's what I do. When I'm giving my talks, I'm showing people how you become one of those people who inspires. And that's the reason why I'm called back again and again to leadership workshops. The best way I can contribute to my community is to continue doing what I already do, is to speak to schools and colleges, and take the lessons, and bring them back to our young people, so they can see that it is the schools that, that are the shining path to dreams, aspirations, and goals. Thank you.
To me, the answer of how to ensure that a board is representing the community might be a little simplistic, and that is just basically to be a part of the community itself. We're gonna be sitting behind this desk, but we cannot wait for people to come to us. We need to go out to the community to understand what are those needs, and what are those concerns, good and bad. The way I would approach this is to listen first and talk second. I think that's critical. We need to have that communication. We are here, again, to reflect the community's values, and to serve to better our kids' education during school and beyond. Another way I think we can ensure representation in the community is, let's get some feedback. We've talked about student evaluations, teacher evaluations, let's try board evaluations from the community. Let, let's see what people are thinking. Are we doing the job that you have selected us to do? What do you think about that? It doesn't have to be all good. This has been a great night. I, I want to thank the DPC and Impact for Education, and I want to mention one thing about Impact for Education, I am so impressed and honored how Impact approaches teaching and teachers, through the grants that they provide, through the recognition that you provide, that, that's extremely valuable. There's some personal experience that can tell you, I can tell you that that is extremely valuable, and thank you for that. That, that takes a lot of effort. I, again, I've been immersed in public education all my life, I'm very passionate about it. I also have a want list as a board member, and I want to tell you what that is too. I want to make sure that I can contribute to an education system that works well for the students. Another want is, I want to ensure that the work environment that teachers, administrators, and staff in is collegial and fulfilling. When that teacher's alarm clock goes off way too early in the morning, that's okay, they want to be there. I want to see that our kids are safe in school. Learning is, yes, it's academics, but it's also experiences too, and we need to make sure that we provide the best situation for those experiences. I'm gonna make a promise, something that a lot of us avoid wanting to do, but I'm gonna promise to respect my fellow board members, to communicate with them in a positive and supportive way. We have a lot of goals that we want to achieve, you know, and I am very grateful for those that have come before us. We've talked about endorsements and support, and yes, that's very important, because that tells us that the community is involved. And I thank the BVEA for their support, the Boulder Labor Council also, and many of the, you know, over a dozen former board members have, have told me that, yes, we, we want you to be available, we want you to continue the work that we've put into place for that. But we want you to be your own person too, in that respect. I appreciate that, and thank you again for this opportunity for serving the community.
So I'll start first with how I engage with the community. For the last four years, I show up to, I try to show up to most meetings that I'm invited to. Last Monday, I was at the Trends Report that was presented by the Community Foundation. You know, I meet with people from I Have a Dream. I chair the Conference of World Affairs Board, which has given me a lot of new relationships in the community, and at CU. I have, I attend the Early Childhood Council, I keep in touch with city council members to understand impacts in the community that might be related to the school district, and also served as one of the Boulder City Liaisons to the city council. And I also attend other structured meetings like Parity, I've attended a paso graduation in the past, or in a paso evening, and also the middle school and high school committees that the district puts forward. Those are the structured things that I do. I am constantly talking to parents, I have two children, so there's, I just have a broad array of friends and acquaintances across the district, as far, you know, Superior, up in Centennial, out to East County. So that's how I, I reflect, and then just think about how those experiences affect our work on policy. And my closing statement is just to thank you for allowing me to serve another four years, it's been really fulfilling for me, I think we have a lot of work to do. I'm really honored to be helping with the superintendent's search. And, and I apologize that the spring was so hard, that we had a transparency issue. It was really an unfulfilling place for, I think, board members and for the community, put us in a tough spot. And I, I have a commitment, and I love your idea of making a promise, there's nothing like a campaign promise, is to try and maintain transparency with like a campaign promise, is to try and maintain transparency with the community as much as we can. So thank you for your support.
So that ends our questions, but we'd like to invite the board member candidates to stick around to allow the audience to interact with you personally. And thank you, guys, for attending, and we'll see you next month.